Please stand by your order. I'll say the pledge, the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Yeah, I wanna like, I wanna get all this.
Yep.
You can start, I gotta go get my glasses, I left them in there. Shelley is excused, Kevin is here, Chuck is here, and Rick is present. You can grab a seat too.
He's waiting for Chuck.
Oh, oh, okay.
I'm the big guy, he needs.
So as soon as Chuck gets back, we'll go right to our public hearing. And then we'll. We'll do public comment right after the public hearing. Apologize Chip, I did forget about the public hearing when you asked me.
Rod sent us something?
What's that?
Did Rod send us something?
I didn't know what Rodney had. Rodney did ask to come into the meeting later. Do you see Chuck, Rick, do you see Chuck in the lobby? No.
He went out to get his glasses.
Okay.
You can't see, I mean, I don't need your glasses.
So this is a, a public hearing. And I'd like to call the, um, public hearing to order. There's our motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Uh, who's taking notes? Give me that. Shelley and Ryan are both out. Somebody could record the motions.
I'll do it.
You're not wanna do it?
Okay, thank you Chuck. Alright, so Chuck motion, open hearing, is there a second?
I seconded.
He seconded, he thought you motioned and he seconded.
I know, I was calling, I was pressing a motion.
So you want a motion and I'll second, or all motion?
That's fine.
All motion.
I'm not as a.
All motion, so move.
Second.
I need to back that up, is there a motion to appoint a presiding officer over the public hearing?
I make a motion if it's on my calls or as presiding officer of the public hearing.
Is there a second, all in favor? Now I'll take a motion to open the public hearing.
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second, all in favor. So this is a quasi initial hearing based on due process requirement that every decision in hearing shall be based on fair and reasonable written ordinances and regulations that correspond to the issue. The ordinance that applies to this hearing is Lebanon Medical Marijuana Business Order, dated June 13th, 2023. Equal, equal protection requirement mandates that everyone affected by the ordinance or law be treated in a similar fashion. Evidence shall be submitted in print form in sufficient copies for the board to review. Irrelevant, immaterial, or unduly repetitious evidence will not be accepted unless otherwise determined by the presiding officer of the board. Providing officer will rule on issues of evidence, regulate the course of the hearing, and rule upon issues of procedure. Any written statements or documents submitted must be retained by the chair. Is there a quorum present? Yes, there is. And are there any conflicts of interest?
No.
Okay. Uh, and this is a public, I'm a Scottish, so a new registered caregiver retail store. They have a packet from the code officer. And in the packet is our checklist. They are all checked or in aid, but anybody else like to review the checklist? Are there any contingencies such as? The, the, um, application is also in the folder with a paid receipt. In the full amount. So at this time, I'll let the applicant make any statements he wants to.
No.
Okay, are there any parties, um, who are any comments or questions from any other parties? So testimony is closed and the board will now deliberate. Alright, any questions or concerns from the board? Would any board members like to review the application? Okay. Alright, so, um, I'll request a motion from the board to end testimony, move into deliberation, so move. All in favor. Alright, any further deliberation, everybody already said no. Okay. Thank you Jen. So I'll make a motion to approve the application. And renew. A license to Brian Sharlin doing business as Harvest Goddess for registered caregiver retail store located at 1104 Carl Brogie Highway. With an expiration date of 8/25/2025 with no conditions. Is there a second?
Second, my only question is, and we run into this, um, your state license renewed date, is that this or is it?
It's, yeah, it's, uh, October.
Okay. And then, and I'm gonna muddy the water, but sometimes it's just easier for everybody to have the state and the town renewed at the same time.
That's why I'm doing it, yeah.
You know, it's entirely up to you, but.
It expires 10/10.
Okay, it's up to you if you wanna.
I, I think doing it this way is better because you have to put it in, you have to give them time, so if you do it at the same day it expires.
Then I won't have my license.
You won't have a license, because that day it's expired.
Because you, you still have to submit the paperwork for our local authorization to the state.
Right, and then.
That's the only paperwork she's looking for right now is the local authorization, everything else has been completed.
Okay, good, just wanted to check.
It, it does sound like you make it easy, but by the time they would get it, you're not gonna get the license.
Yeah.
Delayed. Yep.
Yeah, once you do not, you can't run the store without, without my license, because everyone works as an assistant under me.
Did you, you seconded that or did you? I did.
All in favor. Alright, so the final decision we put in writing, given to you in a fact and finding format. Alright, and I'll, I'm gonna just write down the motion on here, or the vote, so that Rodney has it. Alright, so I will request a motion from the board to adjourn the public hearing.
So moved.
All in favor. Will be the second?
Yes.
We're all set?
You were all set.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good evening, everybody.
Making it easy.
Seeing you.
I'm good.
Brandon, you're cool.
You're not even supposed to have that.
That's right.
Thank you for letting me.
If you want this close, close.
So I know we have somebody here for public comment tonight, so I'd like to go to that next. Mr. Harlem, did you sign in sir?
I am gonna do it right now.
Thank you. Could you state your name and identify if you were a resident?
Chip Harlem, a resident.
Thank you.
Kim Grant Road. Today's date?
Eight, eight.
Eight, eight?
Correct.
Um, I made one copy for you guys, um, if you wanna pass them, just come. Um, I wanna bring up that some things that I'm not sure you guys are paying attention to, and I think. And it deals with revenue for the town, which we're always looking to have more revenue. So I don't think you guys have done a commitment yet, so it's probably coming up on your, on your plate. One of the things in Mike and, um, Mike might remember, we went through the C valuation, so CMP. Uh, so we're on base, CMP is gonna send us a paper that's gonna say, this is our valuation. And it's like, wouldn't that be nice if everybody could just kinda send the selectmen what their valuation was? You, the town could hire somebody to do electrical valuations, if they, electrical company evaluations that they wanna do, but you gotta pay an extra fee to have somebody do that. So normally in the past, they have just taken whatever CMP provides, and that's the number that we use. Since I'm in the selectmen, I've always looked at those numbers. Um, I've always looked at those numbers and make sure they kind of pass the idiot check. Um, come that they made sense, just because I don't trust, you know, they're able to just tell us what their numbers are. So the front page that I gave out there was, I did last year, just so, some of you guys might see it, but it's what I did last year. And it's, and we used a number, so we did not use what CMP did, we actually were, were about 1.9 million dollars more in valuation than what they, uh, provide. So because it just didn't, there's some things that just didn't really make sense, you know, when they talk about the cost of things, and you can look at a trend over five years and it's gone up, there's been a year that all of them, last year they went down. With inflation, didn't make sense. So those are the numbers that we did, so I just wanna make sure that you guys at least take a look at that and don't blindly just accept what CMP provides you. Donald Donald, who's our assessor, he will go with CMP unless you guys tell him to use a different number. Um, it's a number that you have to defend, whether they, it's always a question whether they're just gonna send you a check for that number or whether they're actually gonna appeal it. I don't think they're gonna appeal it as long as you, you, it passes, you have some semblance, because I'm not sure if they have a good semblance of how to come up with that number either, so I think they're gonna pay it as long as it makes sense. We can't, we can't just pull a number out of the hat and just say, hey, it passes, it has to make sense, so. Um, so anyways, that's that. Uh, the other thing along with that is, and I don't, I haven't heard anything, uh, in, as it relates to this, is solar power. It's like, solar power. So I've provided several, uh, several pieces of paper, um, there's, uh, that are from the state, uh, as well as you can see. So the state that talks about how to value solar, solar power, there is a website that talks about how to, you can put it in to come up with a valuation. There is, I put a thing here from North Berwick, so as of, this was effective April 23, uh, they're assessing solar energy equipment as part of real estate. What you have to understand is that there is an exemption. Okay, so you may say, oh, we don't wanna do this, and we're gonna hit nail people with solar power, well, there is an exemption, so they don't have to, taxpayers get exempt. What you have to understand is, is that we get reimbursed 50% of that from the state. So if we just say, well, we, they get an exemption, so it doesn't make sense, we're missing out on 50% of that valuation, because we'd be getting that money back from the state. Just follow what I'm saying.
The exemption goes to us, not the resident.
Right, they get, the resident doesn't have to pay, the tax, the commercial property doesn't necessarily have to pay.
But the state, the state in essence pays 50% of it.
But they're gonna give us a 50% of that number back, as far as their reimbursement. So we have some fake facilities gonna be going online here at some point that are, that are, that are being built, right? And so I don't know where we are with getting all the data for the equipment and everything else, and with Donald Donald and getting that number, a lot of that he may not get, because he may not get it, it's not like you can. Well, when you talk about cost, when you talk about, there's a, there's a calculator on here where, where you have to get some data, so that's what this one here, is I just put in a. Just a dummy account, just a dummy thing, just so you can see what kind of information you need to, you need to provide, there's a lot of default values, but you need to know what size. You know, what size solar power it is, and so you can put some numbers in. And that probably then needs to, Donald Donald may do that, but he needs the numbers, he needs, somebody needs to be able to provide him with the numbers, and probably planning board or coach is the person to do that, I don't, I don't know, but. And this is all new, so I'm just bringing it to your attention, I'm not sure anything's online where any of this would happen this year. But certainly probably next year, next, because it's always out on April 1st. So April 1st of this year was probably, nothing was online, wherever, or if they want them next year, there might very well be equipment on ground. And so that's something I think you guys need to take a look at, and how are you gonna handle that, and how are you gonna evaluate it, and, you know what I'm saying? So, uh, so that's why I just wanted to bring this to your attention. I don't have a lot of answers, I know, like I said, I know enough to be dangerous, but, um, you know, and John will have some stuff that, but at least be coordinated with John, so that Donald Donald. I know a lot of stuff personal, because like Betty, what Betty is like equipment, so there's a Betty exemption as well, so businesses that have equipment, they're supposed to file a Betty and they get an exemption. And then, you know what I'm saying, they get exemption for a period of time, capital equipment for businesses, we get a reimbursement of that as well. So, um, but he, a lot of times, he's not gonna be chasing that down, all this equipment.
I don't, you got all solar panels?
Well, solar, whether it be solar panels, whether it be business equipment, whether it be, he just doesn't, he doesn't have the time, he doesn't have the energy to, he doesn't have the manpower, and so. And it would cost the town a lot more if you need to, if you're gonna require them to do that, he's gonna have to put a lot more labor into cracking this down. It's just like people that have backhoe and everything else, and those are all, they're supposed to be paid taxes on that, and they don't. Right, I mean, it says, we don't, we haven't, and I'm not saying that we should, I'm just saying is that, that's, you know, those are all those things, all that equipment is supposed to get taxed. Just like, cause, you know, and a lot of it's not registered, so it never comes here, if it comes here, you pay tax.
Correct.
But if it's not, if it's equipment, you don't pay, you know what I'm saying, and that's, that's capital equipment that's supposed to get taxed on the, as a Betty, which is, which is a. But he doesn't, some people automatically, a lot of big companies will do it automatically, because it's, they do it everywhere, so it, they automatically file, um, and he takes those, but he's not gonna go chasing it down, so anyways. The biggest thing was CMP and solar, that's really why I came here, and I'm done, unless you have questions.
Thank you.
You're not allowed to ask questions, I guess.
Yeah. Thanks for bringing that up, definitely appreciate it.
Alright.
Thank you.
Becky, I didn't realize you were here for the meeting, I saw you earlier, I think Josh.
Not really.
Okay.
Um, not to say anything, just wanted to listen, so.
I, I think Josh was gonna come, so we'll give him a little bit more time, so, um, but I, I, I already topped it up, but I owed him an apology, I put.
You said it on the top.
Yeah, and I, we talked about it last week, but I didn't communicate directly with Chuck, so I don't even know if he brought the coyote quote.
I did not, yeah.
I do have it.
You have a copy of it, and I, I do have the box cat one in there, so. So let's, let's go to, yeah, thank you Becky. Um, so let's give a few minutes to see if Josh does come, and if he doesn't, we'll still talk about it, but to, to give Josh time, let's go ahead and jump in the fire. I know Rick's itching to tell us what's going on, he's facing one, so.
Oh, we're getting there. Uh, pad's poured, everything else, the, uh, trailer is coming. It's offline, supposed to have been offline Monday.
Okay, so we got a date for the mobile home?
It's gotta go to Colonial first, and then they have to get their rig to bring it over to here, so.
You have to deliver it straight to the site?
No, it's because of insurance reasons, it has to go there, they have to check it out, make sure nothing's damaged, whatever's damaged from the factory to there, then they'll take it from there to here. Which is, there's no cost to us, it's figured already into the, the price of the trailer. And, um, so in case there's any damage from there to here when they set it up, it's just all insurance stuff. Yeah, everything's going pretty good so far on that part, there's still, need some more quotes on the inside, Chief wanted stuff done, walls moved and move things around.
Inside the existing station.
Yeah.
But that won't come out of?
No, well, the, we gotta talk about where that money's coming from, that's nothing to do with.
That on assigned risk.
Money, yep, that's all over there. The pump will be starting soon, soon as the trailer's landed, then we'll have, uh, electrical and plumbing going on. And, um, the septic will be perked next week. I was kinda hoping we could get it done this week, where everybody's just too busy to where we're gonna put the new septic.
And, uh.
Yeah, the leach field, yeah, and, well, if it's gonna be a pump, then we'll have to put a pump tank in, the tank is okay, it's holding water, that's, that's okay, but if we're gonna put a pump, we'll have to put an assistant 250 gallon pump tank inside it.
The old leach, I know people were concerned about the leach field, the old leach field was actually towards the road, correct?
Yeah, the old leach field is, is straight off the backside of the tank towards the telephone pole towards the road, which the, the trailer pad is not on the leach field. So somebody made that comment, no, that's not true, we dug up the leach field, we looked at the pipe, me and Noah, and, um. It's gonna last for a little bit, knock on wood, it can go. Um, but that's why we need to go now to get a new design, get some quotes, get everything going, in case it does fail, if it lasts a day, or if it lasts. Hopefully it lasts till we get it done and get that and get a quote for what we need. And I'd like to do Saturday at nine o'clock, I talked to Mike about it, I'd like to do, if some, I'll be there from nine to 10, if people wanna come down, take a look at what we got. And I can go over what we're doing, and they can hear it from us personally right now.
Back to the leach field, um, I know we're adding a new design, does Rodney, do we still need a, since they're moving the leach field, we're gonna need a permit application?
Yeah, we need a permit for that, we'll have to pay for that, we have to pay for the permits, the building permit too. We'll have to talk about that, but we can't, nothing will be decided until we get that perked test. And the designer can see where we can put it, and what we're gonna put in. And then we'll go from there.
You have any fire department stuff we were talking about?
Yeah. My selection issues as well. Joe and I had a, a lengthy meeting with Andy at Port City Architecture, and we looked at kind of an initial scope design that he had. Um, it was sorta the hit list of everything we might want in the fire station, and he put it into a design, the price came out pretty high, and so we said, you know, let's talk about scaling that back down, and, um.
How much was the price?
It was like nine, nine two, I think. Um, and so we said, let's, let's really scale that down, and we talked about different options. And in the course of that meeting, and before and after, I had, uh, initiated some contact with the congressional offices of Senator Collins and Senator King and. Representative Pingu about potential federal grants, and there are two specifically that, um, we can apply for. The Fire, Fire Grants and Safety Act of 2023, which was actually not signed by President Biden until, um, just July 10th of this year. And that reauthorized the AFG and the Safer Grants, and so we may have some avenue to get some money from there, but that may not be the, the bigger portion of the two. The other one is, um, the Congressional Direct Spending Program, which was formerly called, uh, the earmarks or earmark program, whatever it is. It's basically where we make application to our senator and, uh, go through their application process, and if they approve it, then they'll submit it to the federal budget process. Uh, and if that, uh, budget passes, the, the federal fiscal year budget, um, then that money will be allocated. Sent to one of the federal agencies, it could be FEMA, it could be HUD, it could be whoever they decide to, to send it out to. And then, um, there, they establish the parameters that have to be met, and they don't do that until, um, the budget has been passed and the money is pending being awarded. So, um, that's the one I mentioned a couple of months ago, some towns have experienced an absolute horror story with it, where they were promised a two or three million dollar grant, but. In order to get it, they had to make 19 million dollars in upgrades to the building. Other towns have been successful, I think Limerick, um, actually, as I, as I did some research and talked to people, they got, um, a million or a little over a million or something from that grant, they were able to meet the requirements and whatnot, so it is possible. In talking with Andy, he really keeps his thumb on the pulse of how those grants flow in and out, because, you know, his company builds these things, and he's, it's in his interest to, for the towns to get the money. And he says he would, um, you know, nobody has a crystal ball, right, but he would expect that we, um, have a, a good chance of getting about 2 million dollars, maybe just shy. He says this is usually is a certain percentage or, or whatever. So a, as far as talking about numbers, um, uh, I said, alright, if we factor in a 2 million dollar federal grant. Let's think about something like a five to 5.9 million dollar municipal bond, which would get us to about 7.9. But if we have a building that's designed at 7.9 and we don't get the grant, and we're gonna, and the municipal bond were to pass. Then we gotta be able to build a building for 5.9, and so he knows that, and so what he's doing is coming up with some redesigns, he's taking out some of the. Uh, office space, some of the conference space, um, his design originally had 86 foot long bays, which are a little longer than normal, but he did that knowing that. The projection of fire equipment is to have longer trucks, um, we're already running into that with, with the station we have. So we asked him to scale down the length of the, of the bays, maybe make them a little more narrow, take out some offices. And also, um, get us basically three types of building, the, the conventional construction, the entire building. Or a prefab building for the entire building, or, and he said, a lot of towns are going this route to save money, but to also have some longevity is to do. but to also have some longevity is to do for the offices and birthing and all of that area to do conventional bu- construction. But for the bays to do a prefab unit, because they're not as critical for heat and insulation and things like that. Yeah, they are, but not, you know, to, to the state that the other part of the buildings are. Um, and they, they're easily upgraded when needed after twenty or thirty years versus, um, you know, a building that's got offices and birthing and all the mechanicals and all of those stuff in there. It's, it's a lot harder to upgrade a prefab. And they, they just don't last as long on that side of things. So we asked for conventional prefab and then a hybrid. And he is working on putting those together, and I'm thinking that, that from what it sounded like today, we're gonna get something next week. Um, some numbers next week, so we can start to formulate the question for the ballot as soon as possible. Um, so that's that on the grants and the new building. As far as the land purchase goes, um, I'm working with two realtors, and I just got, um, a message back from a third to get a, uh, fair market value for the land purchase. Um, they evidently are really busy and haven't been able to get back to me. One said they would give me something tomorrow. One said they would give me something Monday, and the third, um, I just got heard back from him. I haven't given him the parameters and the address yet, so hopefully get, get a third one back. And I've, uh, messaged the landowners to, to let them know the status of our progress and check on where they are. Uh, invited them if they want to come to a board meeting to discuss pricing, or if we should just do that more privately.
That would be an executive session.
Yeah, okay. So, yeah.
But they, they.
I hadn't thought about that, but.
I think the first one we would, the first we would hear without them, that's what we would hear from our realtors, right? And then, um, if we needed to do any negotiating or anything, we would do that with them in executive session. Well, I forget the number, but there, there is, uh, executive.
I wasn't sure about that.
For realists, um, purchasing, saying, you know, divulging information to the other side.
We, we don't, we don't have. With a fair market valuation, you don't have to hire a realtor. They do that free, um, in the hopes that you'll choose to use them as a, um, but I, I reached out to a realtor who is a selectman at a town in New Hampshire, because I thought he would have some insight from the town side of things. Reached out to a realtor that, um, I've had experience with way back in the past, who I knew was very good, very honest. And, um, Chuck had mentioned Jeremy Bradshaw, and he's, I just, just go back to him.
Um, the municipal bond, how much, did you say that was, five million? I mean, I mean, yeah, yeah. Yeah. Do you have any idea what, like, how many years that would be and what the cost would be? Any idea?
Understand. I, I, I don't know. It was kinda Chip's thing before he left, so I don't, I don't know any details. Um, some of it we have to look into. If I remember right, it's thirty, just thirty years, um, right?
I don't remember if it was twenty or thirty.
It's thirty, it was thirty. I, I'm thinking it was thirty.
I, I don't know the dollar amount that he kicked into that either.
So like a regular mortgage, basically?
Well, it.
I know it's municipal bond, so it's different, but I mean, the interest rate and everything, it would be calculated, like, with a mortgage calculator, probably.
I don't, yeah, and I don't know the numbers he ran, but I do remember, um, it was, I don't, I hesitate to say this, because I don't remember the parameters, but the cost per taxpayer, I think, was a hundred and twenty dollars a year.
Was it a hundred and twenty dollars a year or a hundred and twenty dollars per thousand? I believe it was per year.
Well, since we don't, since that's all in vain.
That's my, I still remember the parameters.
Right, that's what I mean, we, I think we really need to look.
No, no, they, I'm, I'm sure it'll come up. I just was curious ahead of time what it would be, how many years and what it would do to the.
Something that we need to, to dig into.
Have you ever heard of a three D printed building with cement?
Yep.
They go up fast.
Are they, are they doing that around here? Is that still kinda down south?
It's, it's still down south.
Well, it's New York they're doing it.
Well, it's, it's moving. But the, um, Limerick Fire Station, that was a prefab. That was at four point five, correct? Did they tell you that, four point five million?
I didn't get it.
Yeah. No, they're, they're right around four point five million, I'm pretty sure. Uh, but that's, that was a prefab building, which I, I think a prefab building isn't a bad building.
It's not a bad, it just doesn't have the longevity.
Well, they all, I think they all have longevity as long as we take care of it. Maintenance, you know, um, Wells has got, Wells has got a, a, a substation that's metal, and, you know, um.
Where is that?
Right, um, that would be on Route nine.
Okay.
Toward, right, yeah, just before the exit two. They, they just put that in last year, two years ago. That's, that's a nice looking building.
It's not bad.
Yep, that's a nice, that's a metal building.
A completely prefab building, we're trying to cost down.
For sure. Yeah, they, they're around three fifty a square foot. Um, conventional's five fifty, but I mean, it's, it's the square footage.
Yeah, four, four point seven five, yeah.
Yeah, so it's a square footage. What you gonna do? Yeah, I know, because I pumped it. Um, of course you did. Ooh, we did, we did bar works too. I, I did, I, a conventional building is nice, but it's a lot of money. I mean, you, I, I think you're, we're wasting our time. It, it's, it's a lot of money. You, you, like you said, you're talking eight and a half to nine and a half million.
As for a total conventional, yeah.
Right, total conventional.
I just kinda ran some rough numbers based on square footage, you know, just general square footage of the office birthing section of the building and the, um, uh, bay area. Eat, the bay area, I forget, one of them's a little over eight thousand square foot in the initial design, before he scaled back everything, and the other one was a little less than eight thousand. And it, and it came out to seven-two. Um, but if we went entirely prefab, we would probably get five-nine total, uh, somewhere in there, well.
I mean, it's just a lot of the things that go with it.
We, we've gotta be careful because a, a muni bond is, is pretty straightforward. It is what it is. The interest rate, the terms are it. But i- if we design a building and bank on grant money, we can't bank on grant money. We can hope for grant money. Even if you get grant money, we can hope that the parameters that they place on the building are enough that, that make it worthwhile. You know, if we have to jump through forty-seven hoops and in the, if we have to spend one point nine million to get one point nine million and a dollar, you know, it's not worth the time and the energy you have.
The criteria is sometimes higher.
Yeah, that's just the way it is. And, and the grant writer told me, he said it, it's entirely dependent on which agency gets it and what they decide to do with it, because there's no specific rules governing. It's what they decide to go with. And, you know, they could go, oh, you've gotta do green, you know, like, like one of them is, you know, definite and, um, the, um, Fire Grants and Safety Act, um, you know, it requires that all the steel in a building, literally all the steel in a building, not just the steel frame, but any component that has steel in it, or down to the nitty-grittiest little piece, has to be U.S. sourced steel. So you can't have a, you know, an air conditioning vent that came from Mexico and didn't use U.S. steel, right? So there's just that, and that's, that's an easy one. You know, there are others that, you know, the grant writer was telling me stories of this town in New Hampshire, and I was just like, I didn't even wanna come near this grant, because it seemed like that. But I don't wanna say no to two million dollars if it's an opportunity to, to get it either. Sorry, I'm dragging on. Um, last thing I have is, um, I did reach out to Jenny Clavett, um, about the lease extension on the Merchant Row property to September fifteenth, just to give us something in writing, and I haven't got that yet, but I'm.
I'll mention one thing. It needs to be on the town's radar, that OSHA, um, OSHA has, I believe that they've made a rule, but there's congressional pushback to, um, phase the implementation in. I don't know if that's settled out yet or not, but the important part is that there is a new rule, and it is coming at some point, if not immediately in the next couple of years. And that rule is that fire departments have to go to twenty-four seven with four on. As far as I know, reading news reports, that, that has been paused, but when an implementation will take place has not been settled yet. It's being negotiated. So, um.
Totally agree with that.
Yeah, and I know Senator Collins especially has written letters, just pushing back against that because of the small towns in Maine are kinda really struggling.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, they, they do. It's like Maine when they wanted, everybody had to have work with coal.
There'll, there'll be all kinds of exemptions for it.
Yeah.
There's no way towns can't, people can't afford it.
I just want us to pay attention to how that's playing out, so that if we need to work towards something, whatever that is, and we're working toward it ahead of time and not stuck at the last second.
Part of that, and, and the Port City is, is paying really close attention to that, because part of that OSHA giant ruling thing is what has to be included in fire stations. And, um, you know, like, it, it might be easy to look at a fire station design and say, why do we need a twenty by thirty fitness room? Well, OSHA is requiring that in this new ruling. There's pushback, you know, obviously against these things, but if we were to build a fire station and not have that fitness room, then we might be required to add it on later, which would be a greater expense at that time versus including it in the original design. Or, or by the time we get around to building this building, that might be something that's already passed. I don't know. It's just, there's different things that we have to pay attention to down the road, so we don't trip over ourselves in the future.
Anything else fire? My brain and Josh have been out there waiting. Oh, gosh. Mr. Mayor, transfer station lead attendant. I'm here to, um, he asked to come talk to the board and about what him and Chuck have been talking about with improvements and with the, uh, the skid steer. In your packets for the night's meeting, there's a copy of one of the quotes. So Josh reached out to four companies, I believe, and got quotes back from two. And, um, I, you guys have the Bobcat one in your packets. Um, and Becky from Van Childers has the Coyote quote. Can I make copies of that? Thank you.
Well, we'll get it after. I want copies of it.
Can, um, do you want those copies tonight, or I can make copies?
Yeah, because I'll probably be working with Rodney on that.
Before you go.
I'll just take them in my box.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I'll get them there after.
We covered it pretty good.
Okay, so, um, just to kinda keep this moving along, um, the board last week indicated that we were all in favor of some kind of skid steer or something similar to have as equipment for transfer station. So, um, we have the two quotes, and I think we just, we wanna look at, um, we also just need to be aware of what's in the fund for us to spend, and make sure that, um, this equipment is what, this is kinda what we wanted to bring you and talk to you. Make sure that these are the pieces of equipment that will do what you need. You wanna talk about the models at all, or do you wanna go through the quotes? So you, why don't you, why don't you talk to us about what this skid steer would be used for?
Well, all, all season, snow, um, moving furniture, crushing furniture, keeping the metal pile tidy, keeping metal in containers rather than having it spread out in the yard. And, uh, eventually maybe getting a sweeper attachment later on down the line.
Talking to you guys, talked about here.
I was just looking at the Bobcat. I was looking at the picture. I knew exactly what I was talking about. Um, yeah, I know. What we had talked about was the location of the, the furniture and maybe getting, the big cost of the furniture is the load fee, taking it to and from. And I think with the skid steer, we're gonna, we talked about crushing it up in the cement bay. Skid steer's smaller, be able to get in there, and we'd probably get five or six, who knows, maybe eight on some things, if we crush that furniture up for one on our money. Um, and again, that being the big cost, you know, the weight's next to nothing on that furniture when it goes out, the new couches and stuff, but there's no way to really break it down up there. Moving, uh, with the forks, moving things around for those guys, especially if we don't use, um, a dumpster in the beginning for the mattresses, and we have to do something like that, they can be stacked real easily, real neatly. Um, that would be when we move the shelter over, so that he could use that to keep things in and out. And, I mean, and we had talked about the containers. Um, very rarely would he have to pull a container out with it, but that thing would do it, because it's seventy-four horsepower, and those are on wheels. You have to put track in. But the transfer station would virtually never close then, as long as we had the extra container.
Would never have to close because of a container issue.
Yeah, I should say that. Yeah, yeah, no, it would never close because of a container issue. There would be one there, because that's what we talked about with lease management. And very rarely would they need to do it, but if it happened on a huge Saturday, he, he said it'd take about forty-five minutes to do, but it could be done. And if he would be understanding if they had to wait for that, um, and be back open. So, yeah, there was just, uh, many, many things up there that he can do with it that'll make us, it'll help us out, so.
I did not look up the balance in that fund, but did you have it up?
Um, we, we were fifth, actually fifty-six oh two.
Yep.
Fifty-six oh two. Can, um, I ask a couple of questions?
Yes, I was asking when they come to you, because you're one of our, you're our cat expert, right?
Yeah, well, he's Bobcat. Anyways, um, you want foam filled tires, Josh?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, so.
Versus solid tires?
Well, yeah, Bobcat, uh, Coyote has foam filled tires.
Yep, they were there about close.
This one does not, that I see.
These PR Bobcat heavy-duty tires, I'm not sure if those are solid or not. I'm not a Bobcat expert, by the way.
Well. I think they're just stock tires.
They don't fill, they must be solid.
Um, it doesn't say that.
Is the variable flow hydraulics on the Coyote, the Bobcat does have variable flow.
Becky, you're welcome to come up and answer Bobcat question, not Coyote question.
No, I'm just comparing.
I did print this out. I don't know if this will answer.
I did print this out, I don't know if this will answer. So I don't know for sure on that.
Um I don't know, I guess I guess this was uh was Bobcat quote as well, I don't know if that was.
No, yeah, they they just, they just have variable flow.
So when that's paper clipped, was that?
Which um which Bobcat do you?
Has six fifty.
Oh, six fifty?
Yep.
Oh, I did a seventy-six. I compared it to a seventy-six.
It's that's smaller.
One horsepower is the Coyote?
Seventy-three point six.
And is it, I I a cab, does it have the cab with the glass?
Heat, air, it has a uh, the door is a roll up, like the drive short.
Versus the?
Versus the door, so you can.
Actually, that might even be better because I've ripped mine off.
I've got purpose. The warranty on the Coyote?
Uh, three year.
How many hour is there?
Three thousand.
Three year, three thousand. Well, Coyote, they go strong on warranties.
They do, that's because we don't have them come in very often.
Three years.
I haven't been there. Except to buy it.
Cause uh Bobcat is two years, two thousand. See, yeah, the the P- PR Bobcat heavy duty tires are.
I wanna say PR's pneumatic, P stands for pneumatic, but I don't know about a hundred percent.
What what kind of attachments do you need to break up the furniture?
Is the bucket and forks gonna do it, or do you need a grapple, or?
Well, the the grapple eventually. Grapple, the grapple's what's gonna break it up really well, but I mean, just even down pressure with the bucket for the time being, bucket and forks, get us going.
When we work on your budget this fall, we make sure we put something in it for a grapple then.
Yeah, in in the beginning, I think the bucket will be fine, like.
Okay.
Especially in that corner in there, but I think eventually the grapple would.
Pushing the walls.
Yeah. But I think a grapple would be.
That bucket that I quoted is a snow and litter bucket, I I watched the meeting and I saw you were like. So it's a high capacity snow and litter bucket, that's just, it made sense. If you want something different, if you, yeah, I can quote something different too.
I don't think these are foam filled.
We have to foam.
No, for Bobcat.
Yeah, we have to fill them ourselves.
Does that make them run flat?
Yeah. It makes a big difference.
Does it affect traction though?
It's gonna be in the metal and everything, it's gotta be.
Right, I didn't say that. What else, does it affect traction if you're trying to push snow after foam filled tires?
No, it it's nice because they're weighted, it's just extra weight too, so you have counterbalance for lifting and it keep, just keeps the machine on the ground.
Well, I'm definitely in favor of the Coyote if it fits the budget.
Well, it's not, it's not that it's just, yeah, it's not, it's just.
But it has a better warranty. If we need it serviced, we only have to go down the road, we're not having to go down to.
Yeah, I just think it makes sense.
But if there's no objections, I'd I'd like to fill out a purchase order and.
I'm gonna choose a grapple this time.
Depends on what, we were talking about that, do you want a root grapple, a rock gr- grapple, a rake grapple?
Crushing grapple.
What kind of grapple do you want?
There's your grapple with a bucket under the bar.
So like a a rock bucket with a grapple?
If you had, if you had to break up your sofa? Which one, which one would you pick?
The rock bucket's got slots in it, yeah, where where the regular bucket is solid on the bar.
It's a demolition bucket, it's a flat bucket with the.
So you just want, alright, um I want my glasses.
Is it fifty-eight thousand like the list price, or is that like, or fifty-six?
Fifty-six, no.
Is that like?
That is a.
That's not list.
That's not list. Um that, there's a thirty-five hundred dollar cash rebate as well, they don't offer municipal discount at this point. That's Coyote's rebate. Plus it's way under list. Uh what was that looking at?
The grapple.
What would something cost to to do a maintenance program?
I will have my brother put that together, it's like, how often, for how long would you want it? You know, like, because they go, typically, we do service by the hour. So you don't have no idea how many hours you're gonna put on, probably a lot.
But I mean, like, like, because that that seems to be a problem, or whatever we do. Yeah, there's there's nobody doing any maintenance on anything. It's, you know, warranty is not maintenance.
You can bring that back to us. Because if we're not making, if I'm making fewer trips, fewer.
That with that, me adding with bucket hauls.
We should be saving money right out of your budget.
And we can come right here and serve, well.
That was my question.
Yeah, we'll go serve right, service it right outside.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So I don't even have to.
And other things, um if it goes down for any reason, we have a loan, we'll have a loaner, so you'll.
You put that in ready?
Yes, I will.
No, I'm just.
We're we're required to buy one.
She just put it on video, so.
Well, a lot of people say things on video, then it gets turned around.
I I watch this every Friday morning, I know what's going on.
Yes.
Uh grapple. I mean, list price is anywhere from three to five.
So the cash rebate?
I already took that up.
Off the fifty-six?
No, that brought it down to fifty-six.
Uh, that sucks.
Yeah, sorry, I'm. Yeah, they're anywhere from three to five.
Okay.
Um it comes standard with a third function valve as well, so it it comes.
That's what I was asking.
Oh, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, so basically, if you ever wanted to put a snow blower on it. Right, so your auxiliary. But I mean, because that, you need that third, you need that.
Yeah, it comes standard with that.
To run, okay.
Okay, I I not sure what I thought you meant.
Um do you know of um any skid steer operator training courses via online or something they could attend?
I'm sure there's something online and I can get you some, my brother will.
Give a quick.
Yeah, oh, yeah, because we.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, you have to do it by law anyways, or whenever you rent a piece or you.
Yeah, we don't rent anymore, but when we sell, we go over it all, show you how to use it, seatbelt, blah, blah, blah.
From from the safety standpoint, in town, if if there's some kind of certification that is obtainable, I think it would be wise.
I know.
If you do screen, give it the legislative player.
I I had a forklift certification, which expired back in two thousand and eight. So I've taken, well, I've taken the course before, there's some NACO.
Yeah.
Be comparable.
Yeah.
I'd imagine.
We should, we should have somebody else take that course too with you.
You should go with him.
No, somebody that, no, somebody that's there.
I I just know like.
No, somebody's gonna be there if he's sick.
As Bobcat and forty, we have courses that we can take, but they're not official certification courses, so that tells me that they exist. And I'm thinking just from the safety standpoint and OSHA and.
No, but.
And all that stuff that we.
Well, I will look into a, I think I can remember that. Um service contract.
It's not a trust factor, Josh, at all, it's just.
Well, no, it's all liability and stuff, yeah.
And that'll keep our insurance down as low as we can ever hope to get it.
Alright, service contract training, grapple.
Is there any unit you can put in that for service for hours? Another, like a tag, basically that, for that service part of it, that you know, in other words, instead of writing it down, it'll it'll cling to your phone, ding, we got four hundred dollars.
Yeah, like an app, a monitoring app.
Something that we probably wanna look into.
Well, just if you're within paperwork, right?
Yeah.
It would say like four hour, your four hour service.
I mean, you're gonna have an hour meter.
Yeah.
And when we do filters, we put hour on the filter and the date and the.
But someone's gotta read it.
Yeah.
And it's kind of a Josh.
Well, like I do with my stuff, I do four months, automatic. It's a four month turnaround, whether I got an hour or I got four hundred dollars.
We have people that change their oil every spring and every fall, whether they use tractor or not. Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah, if we do.
But the the, this is um I'm thinking that safety committee could could help with that because they're potentially um maybe there should be like a pre-use checklist, and one of them is, so that you're, you write down whatever, and I don't know the curiosity, this is something that the safety committee could work on, I would think.
But if we do like a.
But that that pre-use checklist, it's safety oriented, but it would track things like.
Just to walk around before you, just like you drive a commercial truck, walk around and make sure everything's in working order, your hours.
An existing one for.
Well, the hour is mainly, we'll have a daily inspection.
Oh, yeah, 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 the inside front cars.
But I guess this would give for a thing to come up with if we do, if we do three a year, three maintenances a year, you know, like every four months, like I do.
And that we can adjust it if for some reason you're using more or less, we can adjust it.
But that that would give you a way to quote it. Okay, we're gonna do three oil changes and whatever it's gonna be, and of course, whatever comes down, dip lube and everything else. Is this a dip machine?
No.
Oh, good. DEF.
Oh, yeah.
No.
That that's good.
Has a particular filter on it?
I believe it's got a D E F though, yeah. Let's just rejam.
Yeah.
Just run it hot.
Yeah, what's the delivery date?
I don't know.
Okay.
I I've kind of been waiting to find out.
A couple of weeks or a couple of months, or?
Uh month to two.
Okay.
I will push for sooner.
Is there a possibility to transfer one from another dealer if?
Possibly.
Do they tend to wanna give them up right now, or?
Uh possibly, there's a, there's a dealer up in the uh Topsome Rental, part of Manchester Motors. They have one up there, so I mean, if you would want it, no.
The Conker tractor, no, they don't, they don't play ball.
No.
I didn't figure they would.
Yeah, they might, no.
Any objections?
If it came right down to it, yes.
Vatch elder quote, many board member.
I'm I'm just gonna abstain, just not that I'm against or for anything, I don't want it to go, I don't want it to look like I'm in favor or against, but I also want my boss to see if I vote for another competitor either, if he's watching the video. Not that he would.
What model did you say that was again, S S six fifty?
Uh, yes.
Six fifty, S six fifty T four.
Just a little day compared to a seventy-six. And it, it's almost apples to apples with that one.
Do you have a code number on here that can reference Becky?
Uh, sales order number?
Seventy-five thirty-nine.
Thank you. Do you wanna talk about any of the other improvements, ideas you guys are working out? Now Chuck did touch on a lot of them last week, but.
Nope, just the only thing I was wondering was um what are the stories on the railing?
Oh, um you you have that, you, I need to look into, so let me back up. I think that I need to verify with Leslie, I think we actually have deposited the insurance payment for that.
Yeah, we talked about yours.
Okay, so there's the, there's the quote they gave us they paid?
I don't know.
Give me one, give me one.
I I will mention just kind of for the record, I'm excited that you're gonna get this skid steer. Um I was there Saturday on a really busy day, I remember this past Saturday, the one before. But um the metal was just out everywhere, and you and your guys were just doing everything to help everybody and direct everybody, and there were people crawling and climbing in there, and and I know you don't allow that, but you can't, you know, you can't have somebody there all the time.
We're talking about cans, we discussed.
Yeah, and and just being able to push that stuff and consolidate it, so people aren't so apt to climb around, it's just a big safety thing.
Oh, big time.
Not not to mean the money savings and all of compacting and crushing is good, but just from a safety standpoint, and a reminder to people, I know I've gotten shop racks, I've gotten bicycles out of the dump in the past before, it's always, you know, it's like a freebie, right? But it's just not safe in a lot of situations, and there is the rule that we, they don't allow picking out of there.
Yes.
So it's important to abide by, I had to hold my kid back, I said, no, you can't have anybody, go, go buy.
So we paid a fifty percent deposit.
To them. So just gotta call them.
Call them, get it scheduled.
Do you need, do you need the contact info?
I s- I still have it.
Okay.
Actually, I'll I'll take it again, it's in my lunchbox with all my other paperwork, so.
Leslie already did, the, we're on a five, we're on the five week waitlist.
Again? For the fence, I mean the railing?
For the railing, from the fence company.
My hands, Josh. Sorry, just give them a call and confirm, confirm it, push it, whatever.
Yep.
Then that's done, we're getting a glass container brought in. And then we're gonna figure out, probably gonna be now, till we we don't have the money to put a compactor in, so that's gonna have to wait until we get all our money, but if we can show savings with this end of it.
Yeah.
And the weight and the debris and stuff like that, and increase revenue, it'll be easier to ask the people for that in the budget.
Potentially, if there's a significant amount saved and left over in the transfer station budget, we could ask to disball that.
Yeah.
Into a fund, into a new fund.
Yeah, the more we save, the more we have available to spend to save more, if we can show, we just spent fifty-eight grand and we saved that and, you know, half of it in the first year. So basically paid off the Bob, or the Coyote in the first, half of it in the first year, you know? People will just make it, the better it runs, the more we can save, you know, and we can show that, so. But it's the first step, I think it's gonna go good.
Thank you.
So when I get an answer, who do I talk to?
You just talk to Josh.
Just Josh?
Yeah. You don't mind she talks to you, right, Josh? No, I don't mean like that, I mean, I feel like, for a minute, I felt like I was sloughing it off, but
No, 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 no.
But you seem to be, you're always on there, and it'd probably be easier to reach him.
I just didn't know if I needed to talk to.
Yeah, no, I think you'll have everything you need, I just figured she could reach you easier, I didn't want to tell her, yeah.
Thanks, Josh.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Before we move on, let's try to settle the shelter, it's fire and transfer station related. We need to get it torn down, we need to get it moved over. Transfer station, and it sounds like we just need to store it for right now, right?
Yes.
Are we going to pay the the twelve hundred odd dollars to have that company?
Twelve hundred, or was it, it was fifty-three hundred?
Well, off the ticket down and then another whatever to put it up.
Four thousand dollars to put it up.
I don't know, I'll get it taken down.
What do you, what do you need, you need? What do you, what do you need, you need some help?
I'll get it taken down, I'll get it taken down.
I I I can.
Yeah.
We own an oning company.
Yeah. I figured you could do it too.
It's only wasting.
I've put up a couple of similar things to that, that held a massive snow load and had crazy springs for tightness and all that, so. It were, I don't, I can't see spending that much money first.
Needs to be down by September.
I was gonna say, yeah, they're not, they're not really utilizing that right now.
Fine with it staying there, she's not in a rush for that to get down, but she does want us out and have the clean.
We'll just take care of that within a few days.
Soon enough.
Yeah.
Who do I guess I'm saying is, they're not utilizing that right now.
They are, right, yeah, they are.
Yeah, they're still using it.
Yeah, so we'll wait till the fifteenth and then we'll figure it out, take it down.
Okay.
And it's not gonna be that hard to take down for sure. And if we take it down, we look at it, we probably figure out how to put it up, I would hope. Yeah. Alright.
So I'm just gonna caution about the.
Extra careful so nobody gets hurt.
If we write the reason, one reason we backed off the fire department doing it, cuz we could not have them do it on the clock.
Yeah.
Um, we otherwise, if they got hurt, it would be on workers comp. So it'd probably be the same thing with select board members. Yeah, I guess we did it that. Moving on, um. Let me cross the shelter.
We should probably do it after the lease agreement expires.
Or just whenever.
That way they're done using it exactly and then we.
Um, I I there's some things that are not on the agenda, actually, let's, do you have any select minutes?
No, um. No, just a couple of things. You you're still working on to get back. So.
The um, did you have requests for those yet?
Um, no, you never asked me to, yeah, you were gonna tell me what our recourse could be.
Alright, we can talk after the meeting.
Okay.
I think we're crossing the line on that.
Okay, alright.
Or talk about other things, um, so what I what I'm trying to, I I don't want to settle the bylaws tonight. I wanna do that with all five members here, but did anybody have any comments on the bylaws so far?
I didn't take a time to look at them.
Okay, well, I'll do it next week too. What I, what you're seeing with the agenda tonight is what I'm trying, what I want to start moving towards with the bylaws. Uh, um, I want new business to be listed out kind of how you see tonight, cuz I think it would give the public more opportunity to know if they're interested in coming to a meeting.
What, oh, so under the agenda?
Yeah, um, so agenda would be, you know, like new items and so forth.
Yeah.
And then as we're working on things that would carry over to the unfinished business. Um, I also. Want to do something similar with the executive sessions, if we can put those on the agenda. As a personnel item, so for example, we'll have one later tonight to review budget committee alternate member applications. We can put that on the agenda, we're not divulging what's in the executive session, but again, it makes that more transparent to the public. So, um, anyway, I I'm gonna try to keep this going. Until the bylaws are are finished and then settle. Just point out what I'm trying to work towards, um. Alright, so on. On the top of your piles, which is everybody shuffled around already, but it's your expense reports, the twenty four and twenty five. Just wanna point out insurance, cuz it's been a a hot topic, um, workers comp, it's a forty thousand dollar budget. It's being paid out in installments, but it's a forty six thousand dollar. Um, bill for this year, so we're going to go over on workers comp.
About six thousand.
And we have, well, we have potential penalties coming when they review last year, they do our audit. Um, the rest, the liability insurance has been paid out for the lines, um, that we we have, those. Those are, I don't know that I copied that for everybody, but what we have so far. Is, um. Ship, uh, property insurance. Auto insurance and there's a marine inland marine insurance, I think because of the fire departments. That's everybody.
Oh.
Oh, what is that, nice nine ATV, the side by side.
Don't they have a boat too?
Yeah, well, marine insurance is for everybody, it's not.
Okay.
Uh, so the the total of those. Has hit our ninety thousand dollar budget. And the sum of eighty five thousand, so we don't have a general liability line yet. Um, a new one, trialers are still carrying us, they're giving us another month extension to the end of August. They have not billed us yet, but their two extensions so far is four thousand of that remain five. So I just keeping an eye on it, keeping you guys apprised, it's gonna go over, I don't, I'm expecting general liability to come back in the fifties. Just looking at what we have so far. Uh, and then with the insurance, so. I ended up out of order here, I'm sorry. Um, I need to address Kevin's motion, and and maybe you don't, maybe you don't want to, but I wanted to point it out, so Kevin's motion authorized me to to sign the insurance policies issued by blank. For the last week of July, so a couple of things, we, nobody signed anything. All I had to do was get written authorization to bind the policies, and I did that in August, and there's multiple companies. So if we want, it can modify that motion to just say authorize me to bind the policies. You guys, anybody worried about the accuracy of that motion?
I'm not, I'm not worried about it, I don't have the intent.
That's easy, just wanted. Yes, no, we meant the intent, that's why I did it, so, but wanted to make sure everybody was comfortable with that. Okay, um, the ballot questions for November were about, we have about two weeks left to wrap that up, so. Um, I asked Jen to, she, we have three land use ordinances that did not pass. They were the the MUBEC or our code officer ordinance, the uh, site plan review ordinance and the minimum lot size ordinance.
The minimum lot size ordinance.
So I, the reason you only have a copy of one, I asked her to what she felt the most important one was.
No, I have a copy of all of them.
Oh, did she put them all in there? Oh, she did. Yeah, sorry, she did, okay.
The lot size ordinance, who made all the changes on that?
Um, Southern Maine Plan, well, State of Maine initiated it. And then for us to comply with the State of Maine, the Southern Maine planning. What is that group called?
Southern Maine Plan Board or Plan Commission?
The commission. Um, the one that playing more deals with.
So they came to us?
They gave us the language for our ordinance.
So they came to us and said our lot size o- ordinance is wrong and we should fix it?
No, no, the State of Maine law has changed.
Yeah, they they're trying to go to the the smaller lots for smaller houses.
So we reached out to them and asked um, their opinion on how to get our ordinance to line up with state law.
And the accessory dwelling one, I'm sure is dealing with the housing shortage.
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, the and the site plan review ordinance are changes that the planning board has asked for. As they've been working from the existing one, there's improvements to it to make the the meetings go better, to make the review process. Better, um, essentially, they wanna get the site plan review work written how it should work, now that they've got some experience with it. The the MUBEC, our uh, building code ordinance is primarily to address problems with the fees. Like 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 marijuana. When this, I'll back up a little bit, this ordinance was not written to address things that we're now facing. Cell towers, solar farms, um, what was the other one? Greenhouses. Um, when we apply the current fee schedule that's in the ordinance to those things, we end up with excessive fees. So we want to change those fees and rather than have to. Like marijuana, rather than have to go back every year and blow on an ordinance, change the fees. This this proposal is to take the fees out into a schedule. But the select board has the authority to true uh, to um, review and change after public hearing, so it's not done. In the dark, it's done after the public has had input, then the select board can change those schedules.
That's just the fees.
And there's a copy of the proposed schedule on there too, I thought. Yeah, so really, the only change is is the fee part, nothing else has really changed. Um, and 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 to address the language of those things we just mentioned with the greenhouses and the solar. Uh, so I asked Jen which one, if we only put one on the ballot in November, which one, and she felt that getting the fees corrected is the priority.
I I agree because we are open to lawsuits based, cuz there's a main statute that says towns cannot charge excessive fees above and beyond its. Um.
Yeah, cost and.
Normal cost to enforce the permitting.
And it and it has happened because the solar companies have taken building permits. Work.
And the greenhouse. So. On this one, the fees, the town of Lebanon, Lebanon School District properties shall be exempt from paying town permit fees?
Yeah, because, um, so remember, we have to pay the.
No, no, I know, but I I follow that, but what I what I'd like to know before we do that is do Berwick and North Berwick have the same thing? Because if not, we're just.
Cuz of the school.
Yes, that means. We're.
Which areas are we in? Fees. D? Is it D?
V, uh, no, eight?
Eight. B.
No, no, eight.
Eight.
Paragraph D.
Okay.
That's where you were.
Yeah.
Okay.
So if they don't have it, that means that we're paying fees in their town for permits.
Because the.
It's split three ways.
Yeah, well.
So we wouldn't be on the hook for the, we wouldn't be the only town paying that.
And cuz the school is located in North Berwick and we're paying North Berwick's building fees.
Right, so if we do build a new school here. And he's gotta spend multiple time inspecting it, then we we should make sure that.
Okay.
We don't have to pay, and if those towns have the same thing, then I think we should do it.
The the question um, that that I have for the board about these, do we wanna put all three on in November or just one? Uh, what, making changes like that, we have time to do that, cuz the question, uh, we just need to know if the question is gonna be on the ballot or not. To vote on these, or do we not wanna do any of them when we convene?
I I'd like to do the fee one definitely, just because we're open to.
Oh, that helps the Rod and MUBEC one, yeah.
He he's in such a bind with that. I I'm not opposed to putting all three on, because I think they need to be voted on, but I I don't know, and Jen can rock a share light on if the other two are. Critical for November versus June.
We're gonna have a lot on then.
We're gonna have a lot in June too, so.
I'm gonna have a lot in November.
You wanna do all three in November?
It's a little out of the ordinary to be doing ordinance in November.
Yeah, I think we should probably just do the fee one and wait, so people don't feel like we're trying to sneak everything behind them.
Yeah.
Because we're not.
That's my feeling too.
We're not, but if they feel that way, they may just straight nose across the board instead of being.
And I think it's more time there.
Well, in the public hearing, I think it's easier to focus on one.
Yeah.
So we're gonna go with the MUBEC one, we'll move up.
Yeah. So you can take a perfect notes.
Um, the next one is our ARPA funds, so you have you have a chart with the current balance, what, well, the the revenue and the expenses in the balance. And then the the sheet with that has some different questions on it, the first one is related to ARPA. I just put something on paper, you don't have to to do this um, with the ARPA. The format and the wording of the question is very specific and it's um, right from MMA. Down to what we're asking to spend it on. What does the board want to use ARPA funds for, if you can ignore the question for now, I just put something down there. Um, is it gonna be to buy the property, so I guess I have a question on that. Is the intent to still buy the property and approve the design at the same time? Or do we buy the property now in November and the the design in June?
I think the intent is to do them simultaneously, because I don't know that we wanna do, we wanna buy a property without approval for. And the station, then we just have property.
If you put that down there, you have to buy that piece of property, and if that don't go through.
No, it could be by AP, by property four.
No, it's good, no, if you appropriate that money for that property, you gotta buy that piece of property.
No, you could you could word it, you could word it so it's not, you could word it so it's spent on. The fu- fire station building, it's gotta pass in June? It's gotta pass in, it's gotta pass in November?
Remember.
The ARPA funds?
Yeah, well, we have to allocate them by the end of this year, calendar year.
Then we have two years after that to spend it.
But it has to be. Has to be allocated for proper, I'm getting messages that we lost live feed, so.
Well, we're we're recording. We're we're still recording, so I will just have to post it later, just don't mind. Um, or I can, we can stop it and split it, we can do that.